Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, May 8th, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Karner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olsted?
Here.
Petzel?
Here.
Selagi?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Joining us this evening are two students from Oakwood Elementary School. We have Haley Gibbs and Jacob Schaper who are here tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and they're accompanied by family members and their principal, Mrs. Martin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
We are so grateful for you taking time from your Wednesday night to join us in the pledge. It's always important for us to remember why we're here, and that's for students. So we really appreciate Haley, your coming with your family, and the certificate of the remembrance of joining us, and Jacob is about to hit the bowling alley. He's got some other work to do tonight, so again, Jacob, thank you for coming and taking the time over your schedule. You're all welcome to join us for the remainder of the meeting, but if you have other commitments, as I know what Jacob does, on the other side. Thank you again for joining us.
Thanks for a great school district.
That was really nice.
Thank you for a great school district.
This is always a bittersweet time for the school board because we have the distinct honor of recognizing those student board representatives who have been with us for the past year, who have provided input and suggestions into topics that have come before this board, and we really appreciate what you two ladies have contributed over the last year. It also provides us, however, with an opportunity to introduce and to welcome student board representatives for the coming year, and I know at least one of them is here this evening. So I think I'm supposed to have something here.
So would you like to introduce your incoming person?
Yes. Well, West isn't fully done with their elections yet, so I can't tell you who that is, but you'll find out soon.
And they'll introduce themselves.
Yes. Cabal's here, he's going to be taking over next year. She was here last month.
Yes.
Well, just as we give elected board members an opportunity to share any final thoughts at your final meeting with us, this would be a good opportunity if either or both of you would like to share any insights or suggestions for the board moving forward or for your replacements moving forward.
Just overall, thank you for letting us come to these. It was always fun to sit and hear everything, especially I'm involved in so many other stuff. It was great to know everything comes together and just kind of intertwines with everything else. You're all great. It's been very nice to meet you. You're all very nice. Have a great next, forever. Yeah. It's just like she said, it was a really good experience. I learned so much also, listening to everything that I'd never even thought about, I would learn about, so.
I have a question. Would you two ever think about running for school board when you are old enough to do so?
Um, well.
As a result? Yeah, I don't want the, don't tell me the answer you think I want to hear.
Yeah, well, I'm going to law school hopefully, so I'm going to be pretty busy with that, so I'm going to say no, but it seems really fun just to like get involved in the community and something like that.
Maybe you'll take up school a while, huh?
Yeah. I can't say definitely no. I'm not sure where I'll be in my future, but.
At least now you know what it is, right?
Never say never.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Well, your names will be engraved on the plaque that you see over there between the two bulletin boards, so that we will forever remember you and be appreciative of the contributions that you've made. So thank you very much for all you've done for us and what you've taught us this year as you move on to the next phase and stage of life, and we'll welcome Cabal from North next year and someone to be named from West, so we look forward to that surprise. Very good. Thank you, ladies.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, Board President Report. This is, this is a very special time, as I noted at the last board meeting. There are so many activities going on last night. Dr. Cartwright and I compared notes at some point yesterday, and there were at least six major activities going on last night after four o'clock in the school district, from art fairs to soccer games to baseball games to softball games. I believe there might have been a golf match in there. I believe there was a track meet going on. There was a concert at Carl Trager Middle. This is a wonderful time for anyone connected to the schools and anyone who lives in the community to get out and see the wonderful things that our students are doing and continue to do on a regular basis. And we know that that is supported in so many ways by not only their parents but also by their teachers. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we do love our teachers in this school district, and it's also National Nurse Week, I believe. I probably didn't have that quite right. So I want to give a shout out to all of our teachers who each and every day do so much for so many students in so many ways that may seem like it's unappreciated, but it truly is. I think every one of us around the table can remember a time when a teacher reached out to us in a special way or ways and made, made a difference in our lives, and they continue to do so as we reflect on some of those individuals. And to the nurses, our school nurses, who serve so many children across so many buildings with so many issues and challenges they bring, we appreciate all of you. Every one of us has at some point been in a teacher role, and we know that parents are the first teachers, and so this is a great week to thank a teacher, or multiple teachers for that matter, who have, who have contributed to each of us and the people we've become. So thank you to our teachers, our teacher aides, custodial staff who serve as, as teachers, as we saw Mr. Dan when he received his maintenance, his support staff of the year award, our secretaries. I saw many of them in this room when we had the 4K roundup, and they were involved in various ways, and administrators who teach, there are so many people who bear the title of teacher, even though maybe it's not recognized in the community. But we are grateful for our teachers in this school district. Some years ago, there was an individual who applied for a teaching job in the district, and when they got to that point in the interview where they said, "Do you have any questions?" And the person said, "Well, what's the strength of this school district?" And the answer in a nanosecond was the staff, and I believe that statement is still true today. So we thank our staff and the many things they do each and every day to make a difference in the lives of our students and the quality of our community. With that, I will defer to Dr. Cartwright.
Well, thank you so much. Oh, this is bittersweet. So for our final report, we'll go ahead and start with Oshkosh West.
So at West, we've had a lot going on lately, especially with all the festivities with prom and such. So starting with sports, the girls had a tough match the other day, and they ended up losing, but the game was very close. And then the baseball team won last night against Kokona, so that was a great win for them. In clubs, Index is coming up on their last issue. Next year, they'll be losing 12 editors, so if there are any kids out there who want to join, feel free to pick up the application process. In the middle, you'll see something that started recently. On the windows of the library that are facing the hallway, they put up pictures of the teachers who are currently working at West, when they went to West. So then you kind of sit there and you guess which one and what teacher they are.
Nice.
And then the recycle symbol in the corner, that's for Earth Day and Earth Week. The Environmental Club got really involved this week. They ended up doing a coin drive in order to collect money to really help clean up the school and the area itself. For music, there's a lot for this one. The Drowsy Chaperone ended up coming to an end. A lot of people turned out. It was a great musical. I went, a lot, I know a lot of people that went. It was a great performance by everyone. Soul Ensemble had, was this last weekend at UWO, and there were two main finishers. Brendan Roloff received an exemplary music award for his solo, and then Reed Weston also received the same award but in percussion. And then the music classes are currently prepping up for their spring concerts. Good luck to all the AP students. It's definitely been a big studying time for a lot of people, and it's been very rigorous and intense for everyone, so good luck. Prom, it was a great event. There was a lot of decorations, and with the new prom committee this year, you could really tell that everyone came together from all the different clubs and all the different organizations at the school in order to put it together. It was a great event. A lot of people turned out. Upcoming events, the variety show is going to be on May 11th, run by the Drama Club, and they're allowing any student to perform as long as they prep it beforehand, and then they come and they can do any act that they choose. Scholarship Night is on May 13th, and then graduation for West is in the afternoon on June 2nd, and the seniors' last day is going to be on May 29th. Have a great month and a great summer. And then North has had a lot of things happening in the last month or so as well. We just had our prom on April 27th, and the theme was Arabian Nights. Students had a great dance followed by the post-prom, which featured a hypnotist. Communities, students traveled to downtown Madison for a fun and educational biking field trip. The spring play this year is called The Middleton Zephyr, and it recalls the memories, laughter, struggles, and best times of a group of high school students as they examine their old yearbook. The play is this weekend in the North Auditorium at seven o'clock on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and two o'clock on Sunday. The Oshkosh North Skills USA chapter was awarded a silver in the Chapter of Excellence Program at the state conference from April 30th to May 1st. Two students, Grayden Wright and Brianna Cluse, will be attending the national competition this summer. Spring sports are winding down. Here are a couple of pictures from their seasons. North had around 70 events compete at the State Soul Ensemble Festival at UW-Oshkosh from Band Orchestra and Choir. Many students received first ratings, and North had 16 exemplary solos to award nominations and six event recipients, one of the highest of any schools. Student council thanked support staff for their hard work. During support staff's Appreciation Week, with a luncheon, which was a big success. During freshman and sophomore testing, some juniors and seniors had the opportunity to go on a variety of college tours, for example, UW-Green Bay or UW-Stevens Point. And over 100 music students traveled to New York City, where they saw Broadway shows, toured museums, visited Central Park and other things. And then coming up, the blood drive at North is on May 10th. The Music Awards is on May 15th, and art show is happening on May 16th. The Spring Band Concert is May 16th at eight. The Senior Awards Ceremony is at 6:30 on May 22nd at North. And the Spring Choir Concert is May 28th at UW-Oshkosh. And then Yearbook Distribution and Pride Celebration Day is May 29th, and Graduation is on 11th on June 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As I said before, it's bittersweet. We're definitely going to miss both of you so much, and we thank you so much for all of the work that you have done, and hope that you're taking away some of the extra experience, just as Dr. Herzog was sharing. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and move it over to the Superintendent's Good News Report.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So over 500 of our students recently participated in an artist and residence at Carl Trager and Oakwood Elementary Schools. A caricature artist was invited to share his 23 years of experience with the students as he modeled how to draw caricatures and famous people as well as staff members. Students took away many great skills, and their growth was visible in their sketchbooks throughout the session. Thank you to Project SOAR for making the residency possible, as well as support from the school's PTOs. Students at Oakwood Elementary School have been busy. The school recently received 17th place in the Trex Plastic Bag Recycling Contest, which had participation from over 700 schools. Oakwood was able to keep over 300 pounds of plastic bags and film from going into the landfill. This equals more than 35,000 bags. Students also recently took part in Jump Rope for Heart, raising over $400. Congratulations, and keep up the great work. Students enrolled in our Riverside Alternative Education Program recently participated in the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce Interview-a-thon. The week prior to the event, an HR manager from Musa Metal Products trained students on how to complete a resume and an application and how to perfect their interview skills. One of the students had this to say, "The presentation really impacted me. I used the suggestions along with my resume and was hired on the spot at an interview the very next day." South Park Middle School recently held its annual Fine Arts Night. Families came together to enjoy fine arts activities, including musical performances, an art show, book fair, military pen project, rock painting, and raffles. Over 230 people were in attendance. Thank you to all who came out to support the arts. Jefferson Kindergarteners recently hosted multiple publishing events for parents and siblings. The students read their books for the audience, and then families had the opportunity to see the completed books while enjoying cake and punch. Oshkosh West High School recently received numerous awards for its yearbook and student newspaper. On the screen, you'll see the complete listing of group and individual awards. Congratulations to the many students and staff members involved in these outstanding Roosevelt Elementary School had an extra special April celebrating School Library Month. The books were flying off the shelves, and students were able to take part in fun activities, including the gummy bookworm guess, a bookmark contest, World Book Day, and so much more. First graders at Roosevelt Elementary also spent time wishing Roosevelt area neighbors, neighbors a happy May Day by leaving beautiful paper flowers throughout the neighborhood. So great to see these students are giving back and making a difference in their community. Shapiro STEM Academy recently held yoga and zumba sessions to share different mindful and stress-relieving strategies with students. Thank you to all who participated, and a special thank you to the adult leaders that organized the sessions. Congratulations to Ryan King, a sixth grade math teacher at Webster Stanley Middle School, for receiving the Outstanding Mentorship of Pre-Service Educators from the Wisconsin Association of Colleges for Teacher Education. Congratulations also to Daniel Singer, a band director at Oshkosh West High School, who received the Pre-Service Education Award from Lawrence University. The exceptional work and positive influence of these teachers represents incredible talent and commitment to the field of education. Sonia Karner, a junior at Oshkosh North High School, was recently named EAA Chapter 252's first Ray Aviation Scholar. The Ray Aviation Scholarship is nationally recognized and awarded to only 10 young people per year. Last fall, Sonia requested an independent study to work on her pilot's license at Whitman Regional Airport in preparation for attending St. Louis University for Flight Science. This is an innovative educational opportunity and collaboration with the district and EAA, a true community effort to help Sonia soar. Congratulations to Den Busha, a sophomore at Oshkosh West High School, who recently took home first place in the 2019 Fox Cities High School Pitch Contest sponsored by the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh. Student entrepreneurs through, from throughout northeast Wisconsin pitched their business ideas Shark Tank style to a panel of judges in hopes of turning their ideas into real businesses. Busha's idea was for virtual real estate and included a VR goggles that would allow the home seekers to walk through their homes to see them in an almost live setting. It is National Teachers Appreciation Week, and on behalf of the entire district, I would like to thank all of our amazing teachers and all school employees for the incredible work that they do each and every day. Please join us in recognizing your teachers and thanking them for all that they do for our students, schools, district, and community, and be sure to tell the teachers in your life how much they are appreciated today and throughout the entire school year. We are all committed to building community through education, and as superintendent, I continue to be committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh. So listed up there are going to be just a few examples of where I've been spending some of my time. With that, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dr. Cartwright. Excuse me. Okay, are there, we do have, or did we, I don't want to get my tongue going here. We did receive two district administrator supplemental reports, one on board meeting dates for the 2019-2020 school year, and also a report on extended contracts, which we will be voting on later this evening. Moving on then, do we have reports? I know we have a report from Mrs. Selagi from the Education Committee. Is there anyone else who has a report on the committee tonight? Mrs. Selagi, I think you're it.
All right. So the Education Committee met on Wednesday, May 1st at 8:30. We hit quite a few topics. The first one was to preview curriculum adoptions. This is Julie Conrad did that presentation. This next coming school year, we are going to update our health textbooks for grades seven and nine. There was a committee formed to choose the curriculum adoption, and the resource will include updated textbooks and a digital license, so kids can take at home on their Chromebooks. The AP World History textbook is in need of an update. It needs to be better aligned with an updated version of the AP test that's coming from the College Board. The new curriculum will not be available until after July 1st, but we will be seeking to adopt it when it is in print. The third thing that we will adopt this year is a phonics program. It will be chosen after we're able to finalize all the data and analyze the results of a couple of pilots that we had going on this year in the district. There was some question, and it's been made clear that the district sets aside a curriculum materials budget, which is currently funded at $400,000 annually. That was a question that you'd asked, so it was in here, it's in the report here. The next thing we had was some math updates for both the elementary program and the high school program. They're, they were presented by, Julie Holmes did the 4K through 5. She's the math coordinator in the district. She wears a lot of hats, actually. She also does advantage math recovery, and she provides professional development for our teachers and even districts, teachers from other districts come to that. So in Julie's presentation, she explained the district's journey with Bridges Math that we adopted three years ago. It was in 2016. So the math program, let me see if I can find this, sorry. What it looks like in the classroom is it's 60 minutes per day of math problems and investigations plus workplaces and 15 minutes of number corner. Home connections go home, some teachers send them individually or in student books from K through 5, and then there's also a parent link that, so parents can see what's happening in the classroom. The really awesome thing about this is the data. So we looked at what has happened in the three years that we've had Bridges, and the first year that it was adopted, there was a 7% increase in our math proficiency in the district, and the following year, there was a 4% increase. So in the three years that we've had it, we've already seen an 11% increase. So that was really awesome to see the data and the results that Bridges is having. Julie also shared a little bit about the Advantage Math Recovery Program. It's a professional development to help teachers in assisting students that are in filling in gaps to bring students up to grade level, and the Oshkosh Area School District is one of the only districts that has assessed all students using the Advantage Math Recovery, and we have been asked to, to look at our data and see how this program is working. So that's kind of a cool honor that we have too. The final thing was the secondary math presentation, and that was presented by Sarah McKittrick. She's the 6th through 12 math coordinator, and she's also a college preparatory mathematics trainer and a IST teacher at Tipler. She talked to us about a, the math acceleration program, and there was actually a parent meeting. When we had our meeting, it was to happen in the future, but it's since happened. It's Monday, it was Monday night at 6:30 at Carl Trager, where parents could learn more about the OSAD, OASD beliefs and acceleration pathways and current research related to acceleration. So pathways includes a traditional path as well as an accelerated path for students in the math program. And the accelerated path begins at the seventh grade level and then progresses up to UW-Oshkosh Calculus as a senior. So she talked to us about the process of getting students enrolled in that. There's multiple data points, and teacher recommendations are used to determine if a student should be in the acceleration program, along with looking at social and emotional pieces for the students. Having a strong math foundation is important, and as a district, this is another cool data point, the percentage of students requiring math remediation at the UW system is quite low compared to our neighboring districts. At Oshkosh North, it's only 18%, and at Oshkosh West, it's 12%. The state average is actually 30%. So our math programs are really strong, and that was cool to see. Our next meeting is Thursday, June 6th at 8:30.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Selagi. Are there any other reports? Okay. And moving on, we have non-agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wanted to address the board this evening on an agenda-related topic? Seeing none, we will move on to our, the first of our three workshop items. The first one is called Physician Revisions with Mrs.
Good evening, board. First, I'd like to take an opportunity to reiterate the fact that these are not new positions. They are positions that have been reallocated and are at a cost-neutral stance. The first position that I would like to share with you, and Ms. Conrad is going to provide any input as needed, is the OASDE Academy. This enables our students to receive education online. There are plans to expand into the middle school grades during the 2020-2021 school year. We anticipate recapturing 10 or more students who are currently open and enrolled to virtual time charter schools. 10 students would generate enough funding to fund one FTE position for this program. Enrollment beyond 10 students would generate funds for an OASDE Academy expansion. Anything you'd like to add, Ms. Conrad?
Currently, we are running E-Academy. Students are eligible to take up to two courses per, two courses per semester. We want to make sure that we expand this to a full-time option so that students can take anywhere from three to four to all the way up to the full-time option. We are looking at doing this expansion, we're calling it a soft opening, so to speak, because really our intention for the fall is to recapture back our students that are already open and enrolling to other districts. So we will be doing targeted marketing, so to speak, or invitations to come back to the Oshkosh Area School District because we are now offering this. So once again, we're, we're looking at 10 students, but our hope is to get much more than that. In addition to that, we're going to also be looking at increasing the number of students that are taking E-Academy courses, so their days are going to start to look a little bit more blended. But in order to get that going, we need additional registrar time, and we need additional time from E-Academy mentors and coaches to being able to assist in those students. So you're going to hear more about that planning, but we do know that we're going to need more staff time, especially with full-time students. We're going to have to really work with them and provide the supports to make sure that they're ready to go.
What kinds of things would students be able to do by being enrolled in the Oshkosh Area School District E-Academy that they currently can't do by being part of some other virtual school, for example?
What they would be able to do is participate in all of our extracurriculars and other activities that are provided to all of our students here in the Oshkosh Area School District. What's also unique is that we have students and families that are looking for What's also unique is that we have students and families that are looking for a blended option, so maybe I'm taking six classes online and one class in person because music, it's kind of hard to do music online, especially if you're in a choral ensemble, that seems, I mean, perhaps you can do it, but you know what I'm saying?
Very small ensemble.
Very small ensemble, but that's really the opportunity is that you're going to get the best of both worlds. You choose the environment that your, that the student chooses the environment that they want to learn in and the family can choose the environment that they want to learn a particular academic subject area or course in. So we want to expand that for families.
Thank you, Mrs. Kerr. Yes.
I just want to point out, that's really one of the very unique elements for how we're providing this for our students, starting with our high schools, because many of the online virtual options, you're enrolled in that online school with us, you will be enrolled in one of the two high schools. That way, again, it just gives you those opportunities because in an, in an online charter environment, you don't get a lot of those things. If you want to go to prom, you don't get those type of social, you know, social environment and opportunities. So again, just reiterating, this is a soft rollout for this year that gives us time to get our feet wet into this, you know, for, this is new for our district. And all where, right now, we're front-loading the position, as we say, even though it's a cost neutral, we're front-loading it, but it would only actually take 10 students to be enrolled in this based off our estimates in order for it to actually pay for that teacher, which in the future would free up a position for something coming in the future potentially. So I just wanted to emphasize that again because we currently have, I believe, 53 students that open enroll out.
That is correct. We have 53 students that are currently open enrolled to a full-time virtual option. And just to clarify, it's not a 1.0 teacher, it's a, it's a collection of FTE that adds up to 1.0 because we already have, do you know what I'm saying, we have multiple, we have people already work, we have online teachers and we have online teachers working within that. We just know we're going to have to add these additional on to get us going, so.
It makes me so excited. I, this, when I heard this, I was, yeah, over the moon. I'm so excited for this. It's such a need and I, just one more thing that we can really give our students that there's a big need for, so I'm really excited.
Although 53 in mine says 55, so whatever number it is, our money's going to their districts, right?
Correct, correct. And so the 53 is we know we're bundling up the, we're bundling that up and they are in particular enrolling into a virtual full-time piece, so, yeah. We want to recapture our students.
Thank you.
The next position to be discussed is the North Family Community Outreach Liaison. We solicited input from Ms. Kiffmeyer in looking at what we wanted this position to look like. And what she envisioned and shared with us is a need on her campus for someone to help connect with her families and with her students, to serve as a liaison so that all students on her campus would feel welcomed and have someone that they could connect to, to share any concerns that they might have. And again, the purpose is to bridge that gap that might exist between the schools and the family. Additionally, this person would provide an emphasis on school and home connections, restorative justice, truancy and coping skills will be essential for this position. The 4K IST position, we worked very closely with Ms. Shindel on this position and as the needs increased across our district at the early learning level, they continue to increase and this position provides teachers with support in implementing universal tiered and targeted support. This position also enables the district to provide three full-time staff district-wide, which would serve as both an academic and behavioral coach. And again, we see a dire need and Ms. Shindel was very passionate in bringing this need to us, so we were happy to be able to bring it to you for your approval. Elementary counselors. As we look to provide additional support for our students at the elementary level, we wanted to ensure that all of our elementary schools have counselors on their campuses. And prior to this initiative, that was not the case. As you know, counselors are highly trained in child development, learning strategies, mental health, behavior regulation and social and emotional development. And they are there to help guide our students towards academic success. So again, having this position in every school truly supports our need of making sure that all students' needs are met and that these counselors are dealing with the whole child to provide that academic success. And lastly, the career specialist. As you know, many of our young people don't really have an idea of what they want to embark upon, what path going forward. So this position is designed to help students really fully utilize and understand the opportunities that lie before them, whether they pursue a college track or a career track. And this position will be shared by both high schools, by both West and North.
Are there questions or comments?
I was very happy to see that position for the North Family Community Outreach Liaison. I know that our homeless students, there's a large percentage of our homeless population that is at North, and I think this is a fantastic role and that we really need it. So I am happy that we are doing that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Question. So how do these, how do these positions become cost neutral, meaning that they don't create a greater impact financially to the district?
Because we refigured some positions with the savings that we were able to utilize as a result of making some reallocations with programs. So we are operating within the constraints of the budget that we already have, which doesn't necessitate us incurring additional cost to fund new positions. For example, the North Liaison Position, we took a position that was in place this year that went unfulfilled because we couldn't find the right person. So we coupled that with an existing portion of FTE to make a full FTE, so that's how we reach the no value there.
So how do we do that for the, the social workers?
Counselors, sorry.
Dr. Kerr. If you may. So what ended up happening is we worked with our principals closely on this, as well as we worked with our special education department with Linda Perron, and we reexamined some of the things that were happening. So taking a look at our enrollment trends, knowing what, what we were looking to project as far as enrollment's concerned, we had some natural attrition that actually occurred, so that freed up some of your FTE. We also took a look at, for example, there are some partial positions. So for example, teacher may have picked up an extra section, so we were paying a stipend based off of that. Well, with no need for next year, we were able to capitalize back in onto those stipends. So we were able to convert the monetary savings from a variety of those approaches and then converted that over into FTEs with benefits.
In essence, we would also have car time also being saved, correct?
That's correct. So those are soft costs that are, have not been, that were not included in this. And as I mentioned before, we're front-loading, for example, the one, the combo of several positions to make that one for like the E-Academy. So that's one position that's potentially going to be coming back to us in the future. The need is greater than what we have up here, but again, fully understanding the budget as it is right now, knowing that we do not have a budget in the near future that we're anticipating, we went ahead and made some natural assumptions and with, I know that my marching orders were to look for, you know, cost neutral approaches and to make sure that we were utilizing our, our resources to the best of our capacity. And so that's what we were able to do and I'm extraordinarily appreciative for all of my principals that had, that sat and had some very purposeful conversations as well as exec team, really going in and taking a look at this and how to figure this out. Then we also, again, so for example, you know, there was a presentation, for example, with our 4K that had been done, they originally wanted 1.5 ISTs and they wanted one social worker. And you even heard me say, I think we can have two social workers, there's such a need for that. So then it was a prioritization, so how do we choose what to give based on such a large need? So we knew that we could give the one, the one FTE for the IST position and then with the hopes, quite candidly, taking a little bit of a positive approach on this with Governor Evers' budget, there are components within there. So for example, we know where it's taking traction right now, specifically, we know special education has gained traction, we know mental health has gained traction. Within the mental health, how they defined mental health included social workers. And so I wanted to, I don't know how they're going to fund that per se, and so I wanted to be very cognizant of how that potentially could be funded because if it's funded as a grant, we hire a social worker now, I can't apply for that grant because it would be supplanting funds. So we were very, very critical and very strategic on how to decide which ones to go for when, quite candidly, this is the cost neutral, is to inform you of what those are. Once we have a budget in place, we will more than likely be coming back to you, but it at that point will be a budget request, whereas this is more to bring to your awareness and for transparency purposes, the changes that we're doing.
Thank you.
I have two points I'd like to make. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved in putting this report together. And I have been a proponent of having a, the board has the big picture of what the needs are as well as what we can afford. And so I truly appreciate having all of these come together as a package for us to take a look at rather than maybe one in the month of May, maybe one or two in June and so on. Secondly, I want to commend the same group who worked on this to create a, a way of meeting certain needs, defined needs within budget. Because we know that adding positions that are not cost neutral is not sustainable. And we also know that if we do that, we may have to cut somewhere else. So I am truly impressed and appreciative and grateful for not only coming together with a package that we could afford now and providing that response that is cost neutral. We're going to be having a budget forecast in a few minutes and there are just so many uncertainties with our own budget related to the state budget that I think this is a very reasoned and reasonable approach at this time and hopefully with additional funds coming to the district, we may be able to afford some other things like social workers and some other positions which our students need and for the sake of the staff who work with these, these students on an ongoing basis would be helpful. So anyway, I want to say thank you to everyone who worked on these, on those two accounts. Other questions or comments? All right then. Thank you, Mrs. Pinkston.
Thank you.
And then moving on, we have the strategic plan results and the next steps. And this is also a team effort, it looks like.
It's a team effort. I'm going to take the lead on this presentation, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Is the board comfortable with me going from here or would you prefer for me to go up front?
I think they like having you here at the table.
Just making sure I'm meeting the desire of the board on that. So the, the community input results for our strategic plan update. As you know, we went out here recently in order to start garnishing input from our community. And so I have for you tonight a high-level presentation related to that. And I'm presenting it to you somewhat in a format of what is known as almost like a SWOT analysis. It's really going to identify for you high-level strengths, high-level weaknesses, high-level opportunities and high-level threats for the district. So we're going to just take a few minutes to go over some of that information for you. But before we begin, how did we gather community input? Just so that you're aware of that, we did partner with Oshkosh Core Education in order to do our face-to-face sounding board as well as with an online survey that the district also ran as well. And we wanted to take a look at that because of the possible new strategic priorities that the board may or may not identify as a result of the community input. Strategic plans are typically written and, written for about three to five years at a time, that's very customary for school districts. And at the, at the sunset of that time period is where you really want to go in and take a look at it because your strategic plan is, as you might say, is your guiding force. And the, the board comes together and agrees upon what are those primary goals that we want our district to go forth with? And then it gives us, as you might say, that beacon. So we know exactly what we should be, where, how to stay the course. And oftentimes, because, you know, there are things that will come up, you will find that from, well, you've been on the board now for a little while, most of you. And from time to time, something new and flashy will come in front of you and you're like, oh my gosh, what about that? And then the strategic plan, again, allowing you to be that beacon and being able to go be that guiding force is, okay, does this fit within our strategic plan because we are committed to this plan for the next three to five years typically. Now, it does not mean that once you get down to the deeper level, the how, we're going to achieve those goals, that we're not revising those on a year-to-year basis because as the district is moving and is, or gaining or the amount of growth that is occurring, you're going to want to update those yearly plans anyway. But that's where you would lean upon typically your superintendent and your executive team. And then of course, based off the feedback that we receive from community in order to really start designing out the how to get to your, your goals on that. There were seven community conversations that occurred to gather community data in conjunction with an online survey. And the school district, as well as over here, collectively partnered with UW-Oshkosh Center for Customized Research and Services in order to clean the data, analyze it and to create summary reports for us. Common themes definitely were found between the face-to-face and the online survey participant responses, which was encouraging. When we started looking at the collection methods, we definitely went into, okay, well, who are our participants? And so participants included parents, guardians of students currently enrolled in the Oshkosh Area School District. For the online survey, that comprised of, there were 71 people, 71% of the respondents acknowledged and said that they were fit into this category. It could have been that I'm a parent guardian of a recent graduate of the Oshkosh Area School District. And again, that was, that was approximately 17% identified with that statement. I'm, I'm a student currently enrolled in the Oshkosh Area School District. I have about 1% on that one, so not as much student participation on this. I live in the Oshkosh Area School District community. We had 63% of the respondents that, that identified with that statement as well. I work within the Greater Oshkosh community, was 30%. And then I currently work for the Oshkosh Area School District, which was 35%. So obviously, those percentages add way larger than 100%. It's because you could have identified with multiple statements. But in case you wanted to know who was it that responded, you get a better, a more accurate picture of who those individuals were. And the community conversations on the face-to-face, there were seven questions. They had follow-up items in some of the questions and they were presented in community conversations. There was a total of 32 participants who attended one of those community conversations and they occurred at various locations and times throughout the community. I do want to do a reminder on this, though, that the week that these conversations were occurring, we had really bad weather. In fact, they had to cancel one of their days because school was closed. The weather was that adverse. So I would not, though it was only 32, the conversations were extremely rich, they gave us a lot of information, they gave us a lot of feedback. And again, because the, the feedback that we received from them, the themes were what we found with our online survey, we felt as though that was a very brutal conversation that occurred. And the online survey, it was anonymous and it included 11 questions. There were a total of 602 participants, but in order for you to be included in there, you had to at least complete two of the questions. And so of the individuals who completed more than two questions on the online service, online survey, it dropped it down to 569 responses. So when we look, so the strengths, looking at the themes that were coming up, this is specifically the question being asked in both areas is, what do you see as being the top three strengths within the Oshkosh School District currently? So this is listed in order of priority or response, as you might say. So with teachers, 40% of our respondents said that they felt as though they were at least in the top three for strengths is concerned. least in the top three for strengths as concerned. For staff, it was 23%. Communication is 18%. Technology, 16%. Extracurricular activities and opportunities, 15%. Community engagement, 14%. Caring, 14%. Academics, 12%. Administration leadership, 9%. Safety, security, 5%. Diversity at 5%. So these again, being the main themes that were identified as strengths for the school Some of the up here, we've listed some of the quotes related within those themes so that you can see what I'm talking about where there was alignment and the feedback that we were receiving, whether an individual was face-to-face or completed online. Some of the quotes are, you know, we have passionate staff, our teachers are amazing. We have great professional development for staff, we have good support for new teachers, training, mentoring. When it came to district, school, parent communication, we're getting feedback, I see increased transparency in communication. Good communication about snow days. I really appreciate the opportunity to get phone, text, email, so on and so forth. Right? So they said, technology for student learning, you know, technology is so much better. When we looked at kid-focused curriculum and programs, opportunities for students to become involved include dance groups, orchestra, read-a-thons, services for special needs students at the elementary level. They saw that as a definite strength. Community engagement and partnerships. And the district takes comments and thoughts from the community is usually, is really starting to follow up and listen to the community. We're being proactive in outreach to the community via social media and the newspaper and continuing to emphasize the importance of the school district to the community. And then on our school app, student wellness focus stating that, you know, behavioral screenings, interventions at high school and middle school are a needed addition. We're intentionally starting evidence-based coaching on mental health issues present here within Fox Valley. So these were just some of the comments that we heard. In fact, just during our open session just now, we even had one of our parents come in and even comment related to the mental health screening that we're doing for our students. With community and communication, of those respondents that were familiar with Oshkosh for Education, approximately 87% believe that ORE does a great job connecting to the school district, to the Oshkosh community. Just so that people are understanding, there was about 27% of the respondents that were not familiar with ORE. But again, of the ones that were familiar, 87% of them felt as though that was a definite positive experience that's occurring. So over 80% of respondents believe that the school district does a good job connecting with the community. Over 76% of respondents feel well-informed about what's happening in this school district as well. The areas that we have also listed up here are those that had over 25% of the respondents indicating that they would like to hear more information. So here's some opportunity, as you might say. And so with curriculum, 52% of individuals would like to know more about our curriculum. 46% would like to know more about academic achievement. 44% for school climate. 40% for student services. 39% related to school safety. 37% for budget information. 28% for events. And then 27% for district accomplishments. So that's letting you have a better basis of how we are doing as far as the communication is concerned and where are some of our opportunities to continue to grow. Continuing on that vein with identified opportunities, here's the themes that were identified. And again, those are, these are listed in order of priority for you. So the question specifically was, what do you see as the top three opportunities for growth in the Oshkosh Area School District currently? Right, number one is facilities, and that was at 26%. Followed by academics at 24%. Staff hiring and retention at 16%. Communication at 14%. Behavior, 12%. Staff compensation as well as technology at 11%. Diversity and inclusion was 10%. Administration leadership as well as mental health wellness at 9%. Community engagement at 8%. Literacy as well as school parity, equity balance at 7%. So when individuals again, were giving their feedback and writing their words and themes are collected based off that feedback that came to us. And when we took a look with the one-on-one, the face-to-face that occurred related to facility improvement and upgrades, facilities with the district are inferior compared to surrounding areas. We may need to get over the territorialness of schools. Can a district afford neighborhood schools and provide the services needed? We need a change in paradigm, a new definition of neighborhood schools. We have too many facilities and boundaries need to be addressed for staff recruitment and retention. We train teachers and we lose them. Take knowledge and leave. Our staffing formulas no longer reflect student needs. We need a needs-based formula on a school by school. Communication and connection with community members without school-aged children. We need to let the community know about projects that they're trying to raise money for. Do people leave money and their estates to the schools? Communicate between the newer generations and the older about why updates will draw people to the community. A community needs to be aware of what each school is doing. As a parent of a three-year-old, I would like to know what each school offers. Also, continuing along that vein, mental health services, social, emotional learning, behavioral intervention. Learning is different. More students are not prepared to learn. We have no life and learned curriculum, but they're expected to grade for it. Maybe more education for teachers on how to work with behavior, conscientious discipline. With technology upgrades and improvements, the two systems for parents and students, IC and Canvas are confusing. Does the technology access translate to access to internet broadband at home given to the poverty rate of the district for our student, our services for students with special needs? We need to make the learning disabilities program available across the board. We have limited resources for high-achieving students in addition to low-achieving students. In this survey, we actually asked a question where we were looking for what are the top areas? And we asked people to rank where are the top areas that they felt as though where the school district needed to invest more. And so, and we gave them the options to choose from on that based off of some of the initial information that we had received throughout this past year. And so in order, it's listed for you in order, this one's not in priority, it was actually in order of how it was listed. So student learning, continue to invest there, so approximately 98%. Addressing mental health, approximately 94%. Keeping teachers and staff from leaving for jobs in other districts, approximately 94%. Improving and upgrading facilities, approximately 94%. Creating inclusive environments where all people are treated fairly, 92%. And then engaging with the community at 92%. So again, these are some of these opportunities, as you might say, for us to be able to continue to grow in. But as well, it gives you definitely a clearer picture as to how people are prioritizing some of the means that we have within the school district itself. When we look at opportunities for growth and development, this from, again, from the face-to-face, some of the areas that were identified is creating a more global curriculum and focus. Communication of good news and school needs. Increased volunteer engagement with community members. Increased community partners with local employers and colleges. And digital learning, participants discussed online learning as an untapped potential. So those again, were just some of those things. And for us, some of our threats, as you might say, or as we oftentimes will call them challenges for the district, these were some of the things that individuals were commenting back towards us as ongoing challenges. We have change in demographics, we know that, we've seen that over a period of time. We're seeing an increase in the percent of students who are all free and reduced lunch. And even how that flips to where we have more students in free rather than reduced lunch. We're seeing some changing even with just how, what our demographics within the district looks like, even from ethnicity, race and those type of things as well. So those are definite things to be aware of and know, okay, if this is a challenge or a threat that the district is facing, how do we appropriately plan for that and be proactive in our approaches and going forward three to five years out? We know that there's rapidly changing technology and technology costs. You know, right now, the rage, as you might hear, and I think it's not a rage, I think is here to stay, is artificial intelligence and all the things that are happening. So what are we doing as a district in order to ensure that we are preparing our students to live in a world where, quite frankly, there is the possibility in the very near future, 50% of the jobs here within Wisconsin can be automated throughout, through AI. So those are concerns. And I'll give credit on that statistic, by the way, to Dr. Gunlock. Thank you very much for that. Competition from surrounding districts presents challenges for students and staff retention. We are a low-spending district. Whereas the state average is $10,000 per student, we are at $9,400. So whereas there are several other districts that have a lot more income available to them, then they have the resources to be able to provide additional pay and those type of things as well. So how do we do that? Referendum fatigue, limited state funding, which I just spoke about, challenges of communicating the value of education to all community members. And that goes across the board. You may be an individual who does not have a child, or you may be an individual who has grandchildren, or an individual who never had a child, but is more senior. And so how do we connect to them and how do we make this more meaningful? So those are some of the challenges that we know we have to look at. And then these are just the top themes for some additional comments because we did have an area where people could just leave feedback on where are some additional comments that you would like to provide to us. The themes for that, again, this is, these are going to be low percentages, but I wanted to at least give you the top themes for that. So communication came back to 7%. Staff hiring and retention, facilities as well was 5%. Behavior as well as staff compensation at 4%. Administration leadership as well as mental health wellness at 3%. And then all the remaining ones up there are going to be at 2%. So that's facilities, funding, school parity, equity balance, transportation, academics, staff support, gratitude, good work, technology. So as you can see, this is, these are high-level comments that have been provided to us. There's a lot more information that's also available within the report, especially as we go into next week. And the board is looking at the potential of wanting to examine and determine whether or not you would like to rewrite the district's vision statement because that, as you write your strategic plan, that is the cornerstone. That really is the very first piece of work that has to occur prior to going forward on that. So with that, I'll turn this back over to Dr. Herzog and the board.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. That's a lot of information to digest. Is there anyone who would like to make the comment or raise a question?
I, um...
Mrs. Olmstead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is really for the board, this is valuable information. For the community, it's very valuable information. I believe that our community spoke, and these are, this is a great turnout, you know, 600. This is, I'm so happy that we did a full, not face-to-face only, but also did, you know, the surveys at home. I know that we are looking at revisiting our vision and mission statements and making sure that they align with what the community wants from us and what they're saying. But I'm asking, I don't know, you know, this is quite a, you know, big report. So I just want the community to know that and ask that the board member that we really, the board members, that we really dive deep into this and read all this before our next meeting so that when we go to do that vision and mission statement, we understand all of, you know, and bring back to the next meeting what we're getting out of this. If those, you know, what we are seeing and how we are interpreting this so that we, to really use the information that we got. There's a lot of numbers in here and a lot of more information in this high-level presentation we've got.
Good ideas. Anyone else wish to comment or raise a question?
Quick question. Is the community able to view the report from UWO or was that just provided?
It's public.
It's public.
At this point in time, it was an internal facing document in order to allow the board to have an opportunity to review, to review the initial results. We will be, we can post that publicly as well.
Anyone else?
What do we do with the 33 participants' information that was taken out? So we had that 602 and then we're down to that 569. So what happens to that? What happened to those 33 comments? People?
Surveys.
Surveys.
And didn't answer more than two.
Yeah.
Yeah. You had to at least answer two in order to look as though, and it's usually, in research, a lot of times what you want to do is you want to, because not everybody answered every single question in the survey.
Sure.
So I think that's important to note is that not all, not everyone answered 100% on here. But you want to have enough commitment to know that people are going through to give you the feedback that you're looking for. And so by research standards, if you have, if you have, you can set a threshold to where it says, is there enough commitment? Quite candidly, just answering two is a very low, so to remove, if you didn't answer more than two, to remove that is actually very lenient in the research world.
That's actually not my concern. I understand the process of doing that. My concern is just that information. Like for me as a board member, those, those comments are still important to me. Like the stuff that I did. What's that?
If they made comments, they might have just looked at the survey.
If they answered one or less questions, that's still important to me. So I'm just wondering what happens to that information? If someone did take the time, even though they did finish it, that's still information that you, that our researcher or a person who derived all the information may or may not use, but that could still be collected information that could be valuable to us.
Wasn't some, I'm so sorry. Wasn't some of them like duplicate? No, those were the less than two? I thought I read up there that it was like, it started with 602 and it went down to what, 569? Because if, if somebody took the...
You had to answer at least two or more questions.
Oh, I misunderstood. Okay.
What I would, what I would advise you, Mr. Peschel, is that because the way, you have enough of a response rate here, a large enough response rate, and you have a large enough of a response rate in order for themes to be pulled out of that. And it's within the themes that you're, as a board, are probably going to be making decisions. To get down to the individual comment level for one person may or may not influence a predominance of a theme that's being represented by your community.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I still think that that information is, it's the school district's study compilation of information. I guess what I'm uncomfortable with is that, is that we're saying that someone didn't answer enough questions and that information isn't, isn't valuable enough to use through, can I finish?
Yeah, of course.
All right, thank you. To use that information, I'm not suggesting that I want to use that, but I think that information, if it's still out there, should be available for us to look at or for anyone to look at. So it's, to me, it's, it's information that someone in our community took time to answer. Whether they answered all of it should not be a reason why we disregard it completely and it's not available.
I disagree.
Okay.
But I want you to go first.
Just out of curiosity, on the survey, did it say that they were required to answer two questions in order to be validated?
And the survey, actually, your first two questions, you had to answer the first two questions in order to access the remainder of the survey. So the first two questions, I believe, were demographics, if I'm remembering correctly, because basically it was like, can you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah.
Give me a moment, I actually have the questions in front of me here.
That, and while you're finding that in statuism, when you're doing a survey, you have to, in order for the information to actually be vowed in any form, or in any way actually, the sample actually needs to have like the demographic and their names. So if they didn't answer that, or if it was an anonymous survey.
It's anonymous.
But even the demographic, in order to actually sort anything out, they would have to answer those questions in order for any of it to be valid. I mean, even if they did leave comments, they wouldn't have been able to considering what the first two questions were about themselves. So they wouldn't have even left any comments.
So if the first two questions were about their demographics, then we wouldn't have gotten any of the data that you're after, number one. And number two, what they do, like what we were looking for was a demographic representation of our community. And I'm not even really sure if the 600 people are that, but it's the closest that we can get. And so plus or minus 33, I mean, we're really already kind of like outside the statistical world in terms of like what is and is not what our community is representing in this data.
So let me, let me clarify, and if you answer this, in a way, I'll be comfortable with it. So what we're saying with this statement where it was reduced to 500... with it. So what we're saying with this statement where it was reduced to 569 participants was that those 33 participants didn't answer both or one of the first questions, and so they didn't go forward.
I'm going to defer real quick to somebody who had access to the survey. Was it one or two questions that were the required questions at the beginning of that survey?
Okay, well, Dr. Gunlock is finding that. Does anyone else have any questions?
So I don't, I don't really need the answer to this right now. I mean, I'm not going to, this is probably more of a personal thing than it is a professional thing. So I can take that off-air and try to seek that information on my own as well.
Okay. I think this gives us a lot of food for thought, and hopefully, direction moving forward. I really appreciate Mrs. Olsted's suggestion that each of us read the two documents and come prepared next Monday night, when we will be meeting with Ted Nitski of CISA VI, to revisit the Oshkosh Vision and Mission Statement. That seems so relevant on so many levels, given that when we recently met with Cheryl Stinski from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and we were looking at vision, which was one of the five topic areas under key work of school boards, the other ones being accountability, policies, community engagement, and board superintendent relationships, I don't know. We had a number of concerns or questions related to the vision statement in particular as written. Many of us felt it was too lengthy and could be more focused, and so without having a clear vision of where we're going, it's difficult then to set goals and priorities. So this seems to fit together very nicely with the work that Mrs. Stinski had done with us, and will set the tone then for allowing us to determine what the goals are moving forward. I know that sometimes we've, we've seen and heard that a reasonable number of goals to address would be somewhere between three and five. Obviously, there are more themes and more challenges out there, and maybe some of those could be folded together. Another very timely experience, which I just had today, was taking part in a webinar with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards related to teacher hiring. That is available in a recorded version, if any of the rest of you are interested in that. But one of the, there were several disturbing areas that were shared with that that would have relevance here, and that is the high number of students, high number of teachers who leave the profession within their first five years, and the cost to districts, not only in terms of dollar cost, but the cost that that takes away from children, particularly children from free and reduced lunch schools, or underachieving students, and so on, if there's a lot of turnover. It also impacts things like culture and climate in a school that are maybe more intangible. So I know that was one of, or is one of the goals related to our current strategic plan on retention of staff, and I'd encourage you to listen to that webinar. There's a lot of data in there, especially if we were to decide that that was one of the goals that we wanted to work on. So all I'm suggesting is there are some other resources out there that may, may help us in setting the course for the district. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Cartwright for her leadership on this strategic plan and moving forward, as well as Oshkosh for Education, particularly Trish Castle and Beth Wyman, and those people who led the focus groups, the seven groups who met, and the district staff who contributed to this, as well as the many people who participated online, and the, and the people who attended those sessions. It's important for us to hear from the district, because that's who we represent ultimately, as well as the students in our community. So it's important that we know what the thinking is in helping us set the course moving forward. So I'm grateful for all those people and the contributions that they have made. Any other final thoughts or comments, Mrs. Carlin?
I may. Mr. Peschel, in the report, it's saying that data cleaning was performed before analysis of closed-ended questions to remove cases in which participants had responded to two or fewer questions, not including the demographic questions.
All right, we'll talk later.
I just had a comment regarding one of the opportunities on our facilities. I was really happy to hear that our community wants us to invest in our facilities and look closely at our definition of neighborhood schools, because we have been kicking this can down the road for a long time now, and I think it's time for us to give direction on our facilities planning and where we're going next. With all of our schools, that some of that are over 100 years old, not even built in this century, or the last century, the century before, it is time to start looking at those buildings very closely and asking hard questions about whether or not we should continue to invest in them. So I appreciate this feedback from the community. You know, I, just to channel my Steve Eliason.
Good.
Right?
Do it.
One thing that stood out in this summary is that the majority of the people that completed this survey just thought that, with the one-word expression, how would you describe our school district? And they just said adequate. Eh, we're okay. The majority, vast majority, said, eh, we're okay. And we're not just, huh, we're amazing. We are a great school district. We have so many great, wonderful things going on. You know, in our, you all have heard me say a million times that, you know, I feel like our school district can be the best in this state. We have everything going on for us. We've got the university, we've got Fox Valley partnerships, we've got Oshkosh Corporation partnerships. I do believe, as Steve believed as well, that we could be the best district in the state, and I don't see anything stopping us from doing that. I think that when it comes to, you know, we know what happens inside of our schools is amazing, but when people just drive by our schools and look at the outside of our schools, they don't know what's happening on the inside. And so I'm excited about the opportunity to take this conversation to the next level and have these conversations with our school board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlin. Anyone else wish to weigh in? All right. Well, with that, we will look forward then to meeting with Ted Nitski. I believe we're meeting here. Is that correct? Dr. Cartwright?
Monday night.
Monday night?
Monday night, 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., to review our mission and vision statements, and then that will help us set the tone for goals. So I know that we'll be coming back to this topic, and Monday night will be a next step for us. So thank you. We'll be gone then, and Mrs. Schnor has moved into position here to lead us into conversation on the budget forecast, our third workshop of evening, of the evening.
All right. I apologize in advance. I'm getting over a cold, and I only start coughing when I talk, so.
Me, too.
So I got my water bottle already. In the presentation, I presented three different...
That was fast.
Done.
There we go.
I presented three different scenarios. However, there's probably about 100, you know, that you could, you can pick and choose out of these scenarios. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. So the first scenario is kind of like worst-case scenario. It's the current budget, not the governor's budget. We get $100 per member. Member is an adjusted pupil count, when I say per member. It's based on the fact that we're a low-spending school district, and under the previous state budget, we get an additional $100 until we max out every year, because we're a low spender. That is all that, this, that's the only new revenue based on the prior budget that we get. It assumes we give a full CPI salary increase to all our employees, which is 2.44%, and it assumes we stay with our current health carrier and have an 8% health insurance increase. So this is almost, this is the worst-case scenario, in my opinion. And so if we did all of those things that happened, we'd have a $1.6 million deficit going forward next year. Assumption two takes, again, the current state budget, not the governor's budget, the $100 per pupil. It provides the employee groups a salary schedule movement only. So that is looking at $1 million rather than $1.6 million. It assumes we bid out health insurance and assumes no increase in health insurance. It doesn't make an assumption about what we do, but assumes that by bidding out, we can keep our health insurance to a 0% increase. And we have a surplus this year in 1819. Part of the reason we have a surplus is when we do the budget for salary infringes, we don't calculate in any savings from people leaving. In the day, when you had an experienced teacher retire, you were pretty much guaranteed you could replace that person with a brand-new, out-of-school, you know, person at the low end of the salary schedule. So you could save $30,000 to $40,000 per retiree, even though you were giving that retiree a post-employment benefit plan. That's not the case anymore in all cases. So when we budget, we don't take a look at all those people who are retiring and forecast a savings. We just sort of leave the employee group as is. So that means then, when we do experience savings, that's not really built in the budget. So that is why we have a surplus in 1819. So this just shows you that scenario. We still have a deficit, but it's a $12,000 deficit in the grand scheme of things. That's, I don't mean to poo-poo $12,000, but in our budget, that's not a big deal. So I would call that a balanced budget solution. Then scenario three is what I call like the best-case scenario. This, we get our, still get our $100 per member, because we're low-spending, but now, in the governor's budget, he gives an additional $200 per member on the revenue limit formula. This also assumes we give a full CPI increase to all employee groups and remain with the same health insurance. Why is it doing this? Am I hitting the wrong, maybe I'm hitting the wrong button?
Oh, yeah.
So, does this one include the 100, and then the 200?
Yes.
And this includes a step, and?
No, this just includes giving employees a CPI.
Okay, not a step.
Not, so that they get a step.
Right.
But it's included within the CPI.
Thank you.
See, in the past, especially like the year when the CPI was a .12, we gave employee groups a step, and then we increased the entire salary schedule by the CPI.
Okay.
And we've been, we've had a past practice of doing that up until last year. But with the CPI hovering at 2.44, you just financially can't afford to do both. Like, in that first scenario one, instead of having a $1.6 million deficit, if you gave a full CPI and step in lanes, you'd have over a $2.6 million deficit. So when the CPI is hovering this high, as a district, I don't think you can continue to afford to do both for employee groups.
So, I'm sorry, so you're looking at doing the step and then bringing, including the step, bringing you up to the 2.44. Using the step and the...
Yeah, yes. So between the two together.
They come up to the...
Come up to the 2.44. So what you, how I would calculate it is I give everybody a step.
Yeah.
And see how much that costs, and that costs about $1 million. So then, that leaves us about $600,000, $700,000 left, that we would then distribute onto the salary schedule. So the downside of that is people who are maxed out on the schedule that aren't moving through the schedule would get less than a CPI. They would get whatever was left over to improve the schedule.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
So this, I, so this, which isn't moving here. Now, the scenario three, oh, it just shows you that if we do this scenario three, if we do get the extra money from the state, we get the 100, because we're a low-spender, we get the 200 in the governor's proposal, we would actually end up with a $348,000 surplus, roughly, which would give you, but this also assumes that we keep the same health insurance. We give all employees a CPI. But we won't know if this is even an option until the state budget is finalized, which...
Any other questions or comments? CISA VI held its legislative breakfast again last week Friday. It's the final one for the 2018-2019 year. And depending on which lawmaker you speak with, there are varying predictions as to when the state budget will be finalized. By state law, it's supposed to be finalized by July 1, but it often is not.
It never is.
One member, one legislative member said that definitely there would be a state budget prepared, whether or not the governor would sign it, or veto portions, or the whole thing was left to be seen. Others predicted it would go into the fall before there would be a budget. We have to set the levy by October?
End of October.
End of October. We also have to have an annual meeting presenting information to the public on the budget. So we're not alone. I mean, every, every one of the roughly 420 school districts in the state of Wisconsin are faced with uncertainty over what the budget is. That's why it was so exciting for me to see the additional staffing requests come in with no impact on the budget. And I really hope we would be able to do something with health insurance to reduce those costs, because that hampers us in so many other ways. And so that's one area where hopefully, we could bring, bring those costs down, or at least not experience such large increases. And I know, Mrs. Schnor, you'd like to see that as well. Any other comments or questions on the budget? This is really round one, or?
Right, the first look.
The first look.
Pre-round one?
Pre-round one. And so as more information becomes available, I'm sure you'll keep us updated.
Yes.
As Dr. Cartwright indicated, there's a state budget item dealing with reimbursement for special education costs. It doesn't mean that the students would, in special education, would receive fewer services. It does mean that the state would reimburse the school districts more than what they are currently. And then that goes into what's called Fund 10, which is the general fund, and that benefits all students in the districts, in every district, including our own. The lawmakers seem to understand that, so hopefully, that will be an area that we can see some additional funding coming to our district.
That seems to be getting more traction than a lot of other things, but again, not knowing the status of that, or where it stands, or, and if they do increase special education funding, that's a year behind. You get reimbursed on your costs of the previous year. So our 1920 reimbursement would be based on 1819 costs, and I don't know if this would go into effect in 1819, or 1920 already, or if it would go into effect the following year. So it kind of depends upon how it's structured.
That's a very interesting comment, because there have been things in the state budget, because they budget for two years at a time, where something will take effect in year two, but not year one, or maybe the, well, yeah, year two, not year one. Dr. Cartwright, did you want to add something?
You're absolutely right. You know, so for example, another position such as that would be like social workers. There's a year lag on some of the reimbursement that we do, that we're eligible for hiring school social workers. And on our current year budget, out of Fund 10, our general budget, our large portion of our budget, 15% of that budget is spent in order to cover the cost of what's necessary to ensure that we are providing our special education students with a free and appropriate education.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Schnor at this time, or?
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Schnor.
She's got the whole town up.
Okay, moving on then, we have the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. At this time, we will consider approval of, number one, personnel resolution, A, appointments, temporary appointment, resignations and salaries, B, retirements, C, resignation of administrators, and I have a request to pull B. Is there any other item a board member wishes to pull out this evening? All right, then. So the board will consider approval of personnel resolution, appointments, A, temporary appointment, resignations and salaries, and C, resignations from, resignations of administrators.
So moved.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschel?
Aye.
Peschel, aye. Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution 1B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So move.
Second.
Once again, we have dedicated staff members who wish to go into a new age and stage of life. We have Bradley Curran, who has been teaching instrumental music at Webster Stanley Middle School since 2015, Charles Coons, an assistant custodian fireperson who's, who plans to retire from Oshkosh West, who's been with the district since 1990, Mary Jo Rasmussen, a cross-categorical teacher assistant at Reed Elementary, who's been with the district since 1980, and Debbie Stenson, a literacy resource teacher at Reed Elementary, who's been with the district since 1981. Once again, we want to thank these dedicated professionals for everything that they have done for our students, their parents, and our community, and wish them well as they begin this new phase of life called retirement. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Peschle?
Aye.
Peschle, aye. Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any individually considered resolutions tonight. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
I'd like to pursue or get an update, or whatever is required on our planned and new committee for legislative actions.
Sure. Yep. I think we can refer that to policy and governance and probably get some sample policies from other districts, either through the Wisconsin Association of School Boards and/or Niola, and get that moving. Thank you. Are there any announcements tonight? We have someone who's been waiting patiently in the back of the room, as he often waits, wherever he is, that's Dr. Jay Jones. We're going to miss Dr. Jones, who has decided to take a career move and become the next superintendent of schools in the Amro School District. So we want to wish him the very best as he moves on, and thank him for his years of dedicated service to the Oshkosh Area School District, and know that you'll always have a place here in Oshkosh. Thank you, Mr. Jones, Dr. Jones. Next, we move to executive session. Executive session, item number one, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under Wisconsin statute 19.85, parenth one, parenth F, A, review expulsion recommendation from expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who, while not at school, or while not under the supervision of a school authority, engaged in conduct which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, and engaged in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules under Wisconsin statute 120.13, parenth one, parenth C, parenth E. And two, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.85, parenth one, parenth E. A, Oshkosh Education Association, OEA, negotiation strategies; B, Wisconsin Paraprofessional, excuse me, Oshkosh Paraprofessional Employee Association, OPEA, negotiation strategies; and C, Non Teaching Employee Association, NTEA, negotiation strategies.
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Selagi?
Aye.
Selagi, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Yeah.